Good evening, everyone. My name is Ellie Buchler and I serve as the Assistant Rabbi at the Jewish Center here on the Upper West Side. We are pleased to be hosting a City Council Candidate Forum for District 6 with five of the leading candidates. I want to begin by thanking our co-sponsors for tonight's forum: The West Side Institutional Synagogue, the Manhattan Jewish Experience, Kohane Shema, and Lincoln Square Synagogue. I would also like to extend our gratitude to the candidates and their campaigns for joining us this evening. The City Council is our city's legislative branch and has sole responsibility for approving our city's budget. On June 22, New York City will hold its primaries for a number of elected positions, including City Council. This year, you will also have the option to rank your candidates in order of your preference, one through five. This reinforces the importance of being an informed voter when you go to the ballot box this June. This upcoming election is a critical one for our city and for our neighborhood. This last year and a half, we have all experienced the pain and loss of a global pandemic that devastated our city. The immense loss of human life, the economic hardship, rise of homelessness, crime, and now anti-Asian and anti-Semitic attacks makes this election more critical than ever. These issues have all been on the forefront of the minds of many New Yorkers and especially of our local Jewish community. Tonight, we hope to learn from our candidates as to what their vision is for District 6, as well as for New York City as a whole. We hope this evening will be informative and educational in helping the individuals of our community in this critical election. As a reminder, the Jewish Center is a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and we therefore will not endorse any candidate for District 6. We'll open up the evening granting each candidate 60 seconds to give us their vision for District 6 and New York City if elected to City Council. We ask that the candidates stay within the time frame allotted for each question in order that each candidate has equal time to speak. We'll alternate the order in which candidates will answer our questions throughout the evening. So we'll begin tonight with 60 seconds, opening statement from Gail.
Rabbi, thank you very much, and thank you to the Jewish Center for your many, many years of support and influence and good things on the West Side. So I am Gail Brewer. I've been the Board President for the last eight years, and before that, I was on the City Council, as you know, for 12 years. And I would say that one of the reasons I'm running is that we have, as you have articulately stated, have a pandemic to come out of, and there are so many issues: public safety, housing, education, health, quality of life, transportation, everything is before us. And I do think that there will be 35 or 30 new members of the City Council, new mayor, new controller, new board president, new district attorney, actually. And I think somebody like me who's got this kind of experience will be helpful. What are the mistakes we made in the past, so we don't make them again? And trying to figure out who are the people who should be in the room when there is a good idea, and how do you actually make it happen? The Board President, we focus a lot on land use. We've done almost 200 land use decisions in the last eight years. We focus on budgeting. So it's the experience that I think I have that could help our city go forward.
Turn over to Zach Weiner. You're muted.
There we go. Am I unmuted now?
You're good.
Okay, great. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I really appreciate it. My name is Zach Weiner. I'm ready for City Council here, and we're running a really hyper-local campaign that's all about direct action. A big part of what inspired me to run and my friends to get involved is a lot of frustration about politicians always saying, "We need this, we need that." And we wanted to see just direct action, things getting done. So the three top issues for me is definitely public safety, vacant storefronts, and some of the health crisis we're having in the budget there. In terms of empty storefronts, we actually have an initiative startup retail, which is pretty innovative. We haven't seen a lot of movement out of City Council, and the new proposals are not so constructive. This is a profit-sharing agreement between entrepreneurs and landlords, and we got that moving. We actually had our pilot program opening last weekend at Botros Closet. It worked really well. We're hoping that there'll be more on Broadway. This is stuff that we've been working on while running, and I would love to expand if elected. All right, well, thank you.
Turn it over to Maria.
Sorry. Good evening. Thank you, Rabbi Buchler, and thank you to the Jewish Center, members of the congregation, and this evening's co-sponsors. I just have to say, Gail, I really like your dress. I grew up in Midwood, Brooklyn, from a family of small business owners. And then in 1981, when I graduated law school and graduate school, I moved to 129 West 87th Street. I have to say, I loved the beautiful pool at the Jewish Center where I swam for many, many years, and I'm very happy to be back, even though it's only virtual. I married and raised my three children in the neighborhood, and I'm deeply committed to the Upper West Side. I'm not a career politician. Before I go on to give you my background, I just want to say that today I joined the ADL Virtual Rally Against Anti-Semitism. As someone running for public office to represent this district, I just want to say at the opening of this that I firmly and unequivocally denounce all forms of hate and anti-Semitism in the strongest, clearest, and most unambiguous terms as requested by the ADL for those entering public service. The rise of anti-Semitism is coming from fictionalized conspiracies about the Jewish state and this political landscape. So today, I denounce any group that aligns itself with this rhetoric, including the BDS movement, and I ask the other candidates to do the same this evening.
All right, we'll turn it over to Jeffrey Amora. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for having us. This is my favorite part of campaigning, actually getting to talk to people. I'm Jeffrey Amora. I'm an artist, an activist, and a labor leader, twice elected as an officer of my union, Actors Equity Association, where I represent more than 20,000 stage managers and actors right here in New York City. I got into union governance through labor organizing, creating a campaign called Fair Wage on Stage that gave our union leverage at the negotiating table to win record-breaking 83% wage increases. When the pandemic shut down my entire industry, I helped create the Be an Arts Hero campaign, organizing the national arts community to collectively lobby Congress. We sat down with over 60 US Senate offices, and we got $15 billion of direct arts relief in the December stimulus package. I'm going to bring that organizing experience to District 6 to bring this community together. I'm focused on supporting our small businesses and addressing housing and homelessness, and I can't wait to tell you all more about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Great, thank you so much for having us. It's great to be here with you tonight. I'm Sarah Lind. I'm an attorney, a nonprofit executive, and a mom. I have experience navigating the sharp edges of corporate America, the bureaucracy of government, and the shoestring budgets of the nonprofit world. And I've been working on the ground in the community as a member of the Community Board, the School Leadership Team at PS 166, where my son goes to school, on County Committee, and much more. And through all this, I've seen firsthand the issues impacting our community block by block: homelessness that just keeps going up, housing prices that keep going up, more and more empty storefronts, an education system that fails too many kids, and frankly, we're completely unprepared for climate change. It feels really overwhelming sometimes, but it doesn't have to be this way. We need leaders with a conviction to act, to get things done, and to take bold action. And I'm ready to be that leader, and I hope to earn your number one vote on June 22. Thanks.
Thank you all for sharing with us your vision for the Upper West Side and New York City. At this time, I want to shift our focus to some of the critical issues facing our community. I want to begin by discussing homelessness. Over the last year and a half, homelessness has skyrocketed in New York City, and especially in our neighborhood. A number of neighborhood hotels were transformed into homeless shelters with great concern to many residents of the Upper West Side. In 60 seconds, please tell us how you intend to address homelessness on the Upper West Side and specifically the usage of hotels as shelters. We'll start with Jeffrey.
The housing and the homelessness crisis are very related. Our supply of housing hasn't caught up, hasn't kept up with the demand in this city. A majority of our homeless population is made up of families with kids. It's a lot of single women who are living paycheck to paycheck. We need a massive expansion of affordable housing throughout the five boroughs to address it. I'm proposing taking vacant commercial real estate in Midtown in the financial district, rezoning it, turning it into residential space, taking the basements and attics in all five boroughs, turning those into rental units. Then there are those who are on the street dealing with severe mental illness and substance abuse issues. We need to transition away from our shelter system towards permanent supportive housing with full mental health, substance abuse services, job training to create stability, and get people back on their feet. The shelter system is temporary by design. We need permanent supportive housing.
Thank you. Zach? You're muted.
Oh, so I guess I didn't realize I muted it. This mute is always, it's always very tricky on Zoom. This is a tremendous challenge, and I think there are a lot of steps that haven't been taken that could be taken right away by the next council person that would do a lot. The first is that every council person, every year, we have a discretionary budget, a considerable six-figure discretionary budget. A lot of that funding should be going to providing services on the street, helping street homeless, preventing crises, helping them get into care, because very, very often, in fact, the majority of the times, it's an issue of care. When it comes to the hotels, four, to my knowledge, four people died within the hotel in Lucerne during their stay. There weren't services being provided at certain points from the people. Also, I spoke to people in the shelter who were saying they had huge problems. If we're to do that again, if that's to happen again, and we have to make sure that services are being provided, you know, quality of life, that's for everyone, that would have been beneficial for them as well. All right, I have third thing. Maybe I'll hit on it next time.
Turn it over to Gail.
Well, there are three issues that are really important. First of all, those three hotels that have become shelters, when they first came here, they had no services. It was a disaster. And I think that it has improved, certainly the numbers of the Lucerne have gone from 283, which was horrific, down to something like 120. Those three are going back to Lower East Side, the Bronx, and where they were originally clustered. Those three buildings should not, under any circumstance, become anything but back to the tourism hotels and the individuals who live in them. Each one of them has permanent tenants, as you probably know. What I suggest in the future, not in our area, there are some very empty hotels midtown where the community wants small, under 100, run by a nonprofit, supportive housing. That would help a little bit. But we also have to make sure that on the Upper West Side, we do not have transitional. I'm 100% against transitional. I want permanent, small, if it is going to be run by a nonprofit. So I just want to be clear on that.
Sarah now.
Great, thank you. I agree with a lot of what Jeffrey said, the importance of the supply of housing is so critical. I would just add that I think we really do need to, in addition to the proposals he put forth, which I agree with, I do think we need to also build more housing, which is why I've put forth a plan for how we could contribute in our neighborhood to the overall housing needs of the city. I think every neighborhood has to do their part, including our neighborhoods. I encourage you to go to my website, sarahlin.nyc, and check out my plan. In terms of the Lucerne and the other hotels, we were in the middle of a global health crisis, a pandemic, and homeless, people experiencing homelessness living in congregate shelters were getting sick and dying at much higher rates. I believe that it was the right thing to do at the time. That said, I don't think that hotels are the solution to this issue, and I don't think that our shelter system is the solution to this issue. Rather than a shelter system, we need a housing system. We need to get people into permanent housing, supportive if needed, and that is part of my housing plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
So in the last eight years, the problem of homelessness seems to have gotten just worse and worse. Just yesterday, a mayoral candidate stated on a radio show that the amount of people who are experiencing homelessness has doubled in the last eight years. That's different from what Mayor de Blasio announced. So we can't seem to even get accurate numbers. Yet we're spending $3.5 billion. That's the amount that's in the DHS budget. They've asked for another $1.5 billion. But where is this money going? What is it being spent on? And are we doing enough to hold DHS and its leadership accountable for how money is being spent? So the first thing that I would want to do as your City Council representative is to do a full audit of exactly what's being spent, on what, what kind of service providers are we using, how are they accounting for the results they're getting, do metrics to make sure that services are being provided, what are the services that are really effective? Look, putting people in a hotel without proper services who are experiencing chemical addiction or serious mental illness needs to be addressed. Thanks.
Thank you. For the next question, please answer with a simple yes or no. Do you support the usage of hotels as homeless shelters in our neighborhood? We'll start with Sarah.
I mean, I don't think it's a yes or no. I think in the situation we were in, yes. In the long run, no.
Okay. Thank you. Maria?
Not without full services, no.
Thank you. Gail?
No, particularly the way it was done, as we described earlier.
Thank you. Zach? You're muted again.
I gotta stop. I don't know what's going on with that. I'm gonna say it's a no, no on that, especially without ser-
Hotel shelters are not a good long-term solution.
Okay, thank you. Do you support increasing the number of homeless shelters on the Upper West Side? Please begin with a yes or no, followed with a 30-second explanation. We'll continue with Jeffrey.
As I said, homeless shelters are not a good long-term solution. Our current system, as others have said, we're spending way too much money on our Department of Homeless Services and not getting the results that we need. By design, it's temporary, so people go in and they come back out and they end up back on the street. So I want to transition away from our temporary shelter system to permanent supportive housing. So no, I'm not interested in building more shelters. Housing, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Zach?
I'm not interested in building more shelters, but I am interested in re- and better using Thrive NYC, which is the for mental health and drug addiction, and that's what we need most right now. It's being misspent just awfully. There's, I think, 60% out of 220 million is being misappropriated. We have a transparency website, mythrive NYC, that's up right now, so I think that's where the focus needs to be and not further construction here.
Maria?
I would say no. The Upper West Side is nine out of 51 neighborhoods for the number of homeless shelters in our community, and there's a fair share doctrine that's part of the city charter, and we need to make sure that other communities are doing their part. We have a wonderful compassionate community. The West Side Federation for Senior and Supportive Housing, for example, is a wonderful organization. We do wonderful work here in the community, but, you know, we can't, you know, building temporary shelters in our community, if fair share is not something I would-
Yeah.
No to homeless shelters. You know, people like The Rope and West Side Federation for Senior Supportive Housing, Goddard and others have permanent housing that has supportive social workers. That's what we need. People don't even know they're there. That's what we need, and we need those. There's a new one being proposed at 59th Street, slightly, you know, south of 86th Street. It's temporary. I would prefer, and I've advocated it, be permanent. That's what you need.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think that our current shelter system works. Let's not keep adding to it. We need more housing. That said, the one kinds of shelter that we do need are safe havens and domestic violence shelters. The leading cause of homelessness for women and children is domestic violence, so we need to have places where they can go. They should be incredibly temporary. We need to have enough housing so they can quickly get into, you know, new housing. And then we do need safe havens to help get people off the street. Those are very small, you know, it shouldn't be any more than 20 to 25 beds, and they're super temporary, but those are useful for getting people off the street, which I think we all want.
Thank you very much. I want to shift now to crime. Crime in New York City has been on the rise over the last year. The NYPD released its statistics, released its statistics for crime in April 2021, and noted that the overall index of crime in New York City rose 30% compared with April in 2020, primarily driven by a 66% increase in grand larceny, a 36% increase in felony assault, robbery saw a 29% increase compared to April 2020, and shooting incidents increased by a large 166% in New York City. New York City is less safe today than it was over a year ago. Residents feel it, and the statistics prove it. In 60 seconds, please tell us what you will do to end this surge of crime in New York City. We'll begin with Zach.
My focus would be expanding the grassroots organization of community policing that's already present. We have a lot of terrific policing and a lot of terrific community interfacing that happens with the precincts here and the different communities here. We have the Build a Block meetings, but I would like to see our neighborhood go much, much further, daily, weekly, a lot of communication. Some of the examples where we've seen crime curb, like at the 72nd Street, Dwayne Reed, the block association that reached out, said they had a concern, there were some robberies, cop parked there, it deterred further crime, and it was a huge improvement. That can happen at a much larger level throughout the neighborhood, and I've been in touch with some tenant association leaders and a couple cops that I've introduced, and I'd like to expand on that. I think that should definitely be the focus of the next council person, building that organization out, facilitating that, making sure the neighborhood is heard and protected, and the police are, it's all in a balanced dialogue.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, because I serve as a liaison to the Police Department, so I talked through these numbers with the officers, and if you talk to the officers, they'll say, "We can't compare with 2020 because we were in lockdown. Crime was, you know, just not the same." I just, while we were talking, I quickly looked up the current crime numbers, and from two years ago, 2019, we're actually down 2%. So I just think it's important to keep that in mind as we look, you know, last year was an anomaly where no one was out and about. We were all in lockdown. That said, of course, the particularly increase in gun crimes is incredibly concerning to me, and it's so hard because we are dealing with a country with no gun control laws, but everything we can do to get guns off the street, I think we must do. And then generally, I believe in investing in our communities to increase public safety, making sure, you know, getting people a job, getting high school and young adult kids into, you know, programs and giving them things to do is one of the best ways to prevent crime. I know, because I speak with people in NYCHA, that some of the job training programs and community services programs were recently cut. Let's get those back. That's one of the-
Over to Maria now. Thank you.
Good, yeah. I've gotten into this issue on Zooms before about statistics. I would, I don't think that we can rely on those numbers from two years ago as a comparison, so I think, I just want to put that aside, but just say that I think this back and forth on statistics isn't really getting anything, getting, moving us forward. I think the perception that crime has increased in the neighborhood is really, really important. We had this problem with the subway, that the perception of crime on the subway was really important. People weren't riding it. So the fact that numbers two years ago might be different, whatever, I just don't think we should spend time arguing about that. My platform has been consistent from day one of my campaign. The first and foremost obligation of a public servant is to keep people safe, and it's for that reason I've stated very clearly that we have to have good relationships with our police. I'm against defunding the police. I have said that very clearly, that we have to stop the anti-police rhetoric, work with our wonderful 20th and 24th and Central Park precincts. We have to have community policing. We have to work with our community police, as I have done just yesterday. I visited all three-
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Turn it over to Gail.
There are a couple of things. One is, you know, in my corner wall, I obviously talk to the police and have a great relationship with the 2-0 and the 2-4, but, and there's, there is a police and mental health professionals have to go together. There are so many, it's not just the numbers that you listed, it's also the anti-Semitism, the Asian hate, and the store robberies. There's a whole different listing of people who are doing bad things. And like, the question is, how do you stop it? With the stores, whether it's Target or Dwayne Reed, we're urging them to hire some local security, because I do think that the people are coming from outside the neighborhood, that's according to the cops, and the police and the 2-0 and the 2-4 cannot be all for them. In terms of the perception and reality on the street, I think it's both. I think that we have to have a police presence, but also with mental health. They are doing that, police and mental health in Midtown, and as of the last three days, it has made a huge difference, going out together. They're going on the record numbers. Okay.
Turn it over to Jeffrey.
I think public safety starts with having a good relationship with the police. It's why I've already begun to sit down with our local police leaders to get to know them and to build those relationships. We need to have a productive and collaborative relationship so that when issues arise in the community, we can have a dialogue and we can, we can address it. I want to make sure that our police are present, visible, and responsive on the streets. I prefer to have them walking around, getting, getting out into the community and getting to new, getting to know different community organizations. Then we've got to address unemployment, because we're still at 12% unemployment right now, and people are out there pretty desperate. We need to get them back to work. So it's, you know, it kind of makes sense that burglary rates are up when we've got such a high unemployment rate. We need to get our kids back into school and into after-school programs so that they don't, where they're not left with idle time. Great, thank you.
Continuing with crime, crime in our subways has also significantly increased. Stabbings and shoving people onto tracks are much more commonplace today than they were just a few years ago. Without safe subways, New York City cannot truly return to business as usual. In 30 seconds, how do you intend to address the serious increase in crime on our subways? We'll start with Gail.
Well, I did speak to the head of Transit NYPD recently. She used to be at the 2-4 years ago, and it is need for more cops. There's no question about it. They are deterrents, but everybody, most everybody who's doing the crime, she tells me, is mentally ill. This mental illness, yes, Thrive NYC could help. I don't think it's doing enough. We have to, if somebody has a past record, commit something like that, they cannot be back on the streets. They've got to find some kind of help, and the death adherence pick ticket does not work. So if somebody, so that's what I would say, gotta get them off the streets with the record.
Sarah?
Yeah, I think the fact is that, you know, mental health is a big part of it. I was on the train today and saw some guys with some mental health problems who could have used some services, you know? So I think, you know, we have police on the trains, we should have police on the trains, but when people are experiencing a mental health crisis, they should be given mental health services. And I also just want to say that I think that as we get more and more people riding the trains again, they are getting, it feels safer, it feels like it's getting back to normal, which is great.
Thank you. Maria?
I do want to say, just for the record, that I'm, I came out very early on this issue of safety on the subway platform back in February and was shot down numerous times in regard to the fact that I was, you know, creating a more fear-mongering type of environment because I was calling for more police on the subway, more MTA police, more NYPD, because we need to have, we need the feeling of safety. We need people to feel that the subway is safe. We can't get caught up and bogged down in statistics. Something like 70 people said they didn't feel safe on the subway.
Jeffrey?
So I ride the trains and the buses every single day, and I feel it, you see it in people's eyes. People are not well. We're all dealing with this mental health crisis. We've got to get people off the street and into services. I've been heartened to see that there have been, there's been a greater transit police presence on the subways. They seem to be stepping up their patrols, and so it's a combination of providing greater mental health services with permanent supportive housing and stepping up police patrols.
Thank you. Zach?
I was really glad to hear Gail say that about Thrive NYC, being out of whack, because I think that's an area where we can afford more hospital beds, more treatment, and then because the vast majority of the people here are experiencing mental illness, and that could be something that ultimately breaks the cycle of crime for them. In addition, mixed, again, with Gail, police and mental illness treatment should definitely go hand in hand. I mean, it's so essential and obvious, and in terms of even just more training and more funding for that, but police, no question, have to be down there more, and then in order to make sure it's not just a one-time stop, we use Thrive NYC to expand where they go and-
The MTA Union recently asked for an additional 1,000 police officers for the subway system. Mayor de Blasio recently increased an additional 250 officers. Do you believe that there should be an increased police presence on the subways? Please answer with a yes or no, and a 15-second explanation. We'll start with Zach.
Yes, I think right now that is the only resource we have to intervene in these cases, but ideally, they're going to evolve and be able to deliver mental health at the same time and not leave, you know, do it that way, but yes.
Thank you. Jeffrey?
Yes, I think it has to go hand in hand with mental health, mental health experts and social workers. They're the best ones to respond to mental health crises. But yeah, the police need to, need to step up their patrols.
Thank you, Gail.
Yes, the mayor and the governor have to get along better too, though. That would help. But yes, to more police, but this is the problem. Somebody is in need of being arrested. What do you do with them after they have hopefully been arrested?
Thank you.
Then what? There's not clear.
Maria?
Yes, you know, I've read about one more worker slashing. We need to protect the, the workers, MTA workers as well as the riders. We need as much police presence and security, public safety presence as we can until we get.
Sarah?
I think we're at a good level now. I see police in every station I walk into these days. And, you know, we have to acknowledge the fact that the more and more police we add, we start to criminalize poverty. And when we put people into the criminal legal system, it doesn't make the outcomes better. So I, I think that we're at a good level now.
Thank you very much. The next question, do you support defunding the police or reallocating funds from the NYPD to other areas of the city budget, which may include social services? Please begin your answer with a yes or no, and then explain your position in 30 seconds. We'll start with Jeffrey.
No, I think there is room to reallocate funds towards mental health and social work and education. The police are the first to admit they are not the best equipped to respond to mental health calls. So I think there's a great FDNY pilot program. I'd love to expand that across the city. Where mental health experts are the first to respond. The police are there as backup in case a situation gets dangerous. I think that's a great model for the whole city.
Thank you. Just to clarify, so you do not support reallocating funds from the NYPD?
I, I think there are particular programs that could be funded with, with funds that are currently funding.
Maria?
No, I'm not in favor of defunding the police. I'm not in favor of reallocating money. I am in favor of making sure that the city fully funds the resources that we need for violence prevention, addiction services and mental health, et cetera, but not at the expense of public safety dollars. We need our police to keep us safe and we can't, we're not a Petri dish experiment. We really need to have public safety. But the other parts of our budget need to be fully funded.
Thank you, Gail.
I'm not supporting, supportive of defunding the police, but in talking to Manhattan North head the other day as an example, you know, domestic violence is unfortunately on the rise and he is relying on the nonprofits to help him. He was the first to say, I cannot do this by myself. So they need funding as an example. So you do have to, there's a lot of money right now coming from the federal government for the next year and a half. That money could go towards some of these social services, but we have to figure out the relationship between them and the police going forward. And this is the time to do.
Sarah?
Uh, no to defunding. I've never used that language. Yes to reallocating. Look, the NYPD has a budget bigger than many, many countries' military budgets. It's just incredibly large and it, there's waste in that budget. I know we can, I, I mean, people have done audits of it. There's ways that we can keep our city safe and put some of that money into services that will keep our city safer.
Thank you. Zach?
No, I'm not in favor of defunding or reallocating. There's been a lot of discussion about reimagining policing, new visions for justice. And I think we need those and those are important. And yet all the proposals that are dramatic that have been put on the table involve just cutting. And that, that doesn't change the essential nature of the policing itself. I think lending policing with, with programs and people that can de-escalate things, not through violence always. And, and not that the police always do, but people who are trained to do that will go a really long way. Policing can change and be different and we'll need this part of it to do it. We'll need the budget.
Already. There has been a campaign to close Rikers Island after years of mismanagement and decrepit conditions in the prison itself. First, do you support closing Rikers Island? And secondly, where do you intend to house prisoners in New York City? We'll start with Gail.
I do support closing Rikers Island. Obviously, as borough president, I voted on that ULP, the Uniform Land Use Review Procedure. And we have a task force on the topic. Obviously, the, the challenge is where do you put them and what numbers? So as you know, in Manhattan, it is slated to go where there is a current jail at 125 White Street downtown. You know, there's a lot of opposition in Chinatown, but there's, you know, no lawsuits left and I assume it's going to go there. But there is a lot of opposition because it's a building.
Thank you. 30 seconds. Jeffrey?
I've been to Rikers Island. It is terrifying and it's falling apart. We absolutely need to close it and turn it into a green renewable energy hub. I believe in building four new jails in, in each of the four boroughs besides Staten Island. The Manhattan Detention Complex is the site of the new Manhattan Jail. It'll be humane and families and lawyers will have access to their clients and, and those who are incarcerated.
Thank you. Maria?
I do think Rikers Island needs significant repair to make it a working prison. The problem is, is that our jail system is currently very underfunded. It took our city 90 years to build the Second Avenue subway. I can't imagine that we can build five prisons in five years. And I can't imagine that we can pull this off and it's going to work for the communities. So I think what we need to do is fix Rikers Island and make it a working facility that is humane and functional for the workers and the prisoners.
Thank you very much.
Rikers is, it's the largest mental institution in New York City by far. And that's because of the lack of funding for the rest of the services that are meant to support the people struggling with crises like this. This affects so many areas of criminal justice. And I think as a great first step would be taking Thrive, taking some of this enormous money, you see it on my thrive NYC, you'll be shocked by the numbers. Putting that into hospital beds, doctors, new treatments. There's breakthrough treatments that are working really well. Take out a huge crowd of those people that should not be in jail and should be in treatment, help them. And that's going to make the ball roll easier in general.
Already, Sarah.
I agree with basically everything that Zach and Jeffrey said. So that's, that's great. Yeah, we must close Rikers and I also am in favor of building the borough-based jails. I know there's some opposition locally and then there's some on the kind of far left who think that we should have no jails. I, I don't agree with that. We will always need some jails. And they should be humane and they should be in a place where, as Jeffrey said, families and attorneys can access their clients and family members more easily.
Thank you very much. Hate crime is up in New York City. During the pandemic, anti-Asian hate crime and now antisemitic hate crime is rising. In 60 seconds, what will you do to curb the rise of both anti-Asian and antisemitic hate crimes? We'll begin with Maria.
So back in February, I attended a rally for anti-Asian hate crime. I was probably one of the first representatives running for, for council to do so, asking for the anti-Asian hate crime unit to be fully funded. And I'm happy to say that that did happen. And I'm seeing that the NYPD is actually allocating a significant amount of additional resources to fight antisemitism and anti-Asian rhetoric. I do want to say that this is very personal to me. I recently had an incident happen with one of my children where she received a, a text message that was a threatening text message. It's something that we're seeing more and more of and it's something that we need to denounce. We need to denounce it clearly and unambiguously, as I did at the beginning. I also want to say that we must put an end to antisemitic rhetoric that's including the kind of false narrative about Israel that we're hearing in the press. And we as public, uh, people running to represent the public need to denounce that firmly, clearly and unambiguously.
Thank you.
And every day.
Sarah?
Yeah, I think there are a couple of key things that we need to do. In kind of a long-term holistic way, we need to improve our education around, you know, what hate crimes are, around our differences. I mentioned on a forum the other night that there's a really, I should have looked up the statistic, but a really crazy number of people in this country who don't even believe the Holocaust happened. So clearly there's real education need there and we need to be making sure that people understand the history and the context of all of this. More immediately, in the city, CB7 had the NYPD Hate Crimes Task Force at a meeting and they talked about what they were doing. I think they're doing really good work. One thing that I was particularly excited about is the restorative justice work that they're doing, which is something I think we can use in many different cases, but I think it's especially great to use in cases of hate crimes to help people understand what they've done. And, uh, you know, there's, there's real evidence that it works to help prevent recidivism, which is, I think, critical.
Thank you. Zach?
I think the first step, and this gets back to some of the direct action myself and my team are taking, is getting together, organizing with other communities around shared initiatives. We have the Brooklyn Upper West Side Alliance with more events coming soon of another candidate in her organization from District 40. I think that will go a long way. Not just in building understanding, but in building and connecting the leadership of different communities so they can coordinate and try to tamp it down and deal with it then. I obviously advocated incredibly strongly for, on behalf of, of pursuing this and, and really making this a top priority. And the virtue of New York, one of the great virtues of New York is we're the most diverse place on the planet and, and the history of the planet. And in terms of this discrimination, it's just, it's antithetical to New York. And I think especially in the case of antisemitism, it's often a bellwether of a, a real sickening of any society when, when this pops up. So, and, and I think that that's something we got to take real, real firm action on, talk a lot about. So uniting around these initiatives is going to go a long way. And I've been looking forward to all of you hearing announcements from the Brooklyn Upper West Side Alliance.
Well, this is really an awful crime. I mean, obviously the Asian community suffered at the beginning of January 2020 when they faced horrible hate because of the pandemic and now they're facing it again. And all of my Asian friends are afraid to walk out the door. I've had several press conferences and been to, I don't know, 15 or 20 rallies on that topic. And same thing with friends who are Jewish. A woman stopped me today. She's from Israel. She got stopped the other day running in the park by some person who asked if she was a Jew. Horrible. She was, never happened before. She's been here for 30 years. There definitely, uh, police presence, the hate crime needs, task force needs more. But the groups that are working on this from ADL to the Asian groups need a lot more funding. That is something that needs to be prioritized. And the other thing is the schools. I mean, the schools, not only do they not know about Holocaust, they don't really think about internment. And so the entire education in the schools needs to be revamped on so many different issues. Thank you.
Jeffrey?
Uh, what, what's going on is real and it's terrifying. And I want to say, Maria, I'm so sorry what happened to your daughter. That is, is really scary stuff. I know what it's like to be the target of hate as a gay man, as an Asian American man. This has been a really scary year. I've been heartened to see at the rallies that I've been to, leaders from various communities coming together to denounce this hate. All of our elected leaders need to continue to do so. Others are absolutely right in saying we need to teach our history. It's, uh, it's a lot harder to otherize someone when you understand that their history is your history. We've got to invest in our communities. The Asian American community makes up 15% of the city's population but receives only 1.4% of social services contracts. We've got to change that and that starts with representation at the city council level. We've also got to train our police to ask the right questions when they arrive at crime scenes so that these hate crimes can be prosecuted. What we discovered was that last year during COVID, a lot of anti-Asian hate crimes were miscategorized and they can't be prosecuted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The state of Israel is near and dear to the hearts of our community members. Israel is the home to over 6 million Jews and serves as the safe haven for Jews around the world. Community members are concerned that the BDS movement, boycott, divestment and sanction movement against the state of Israel could one day become law or the policy in the city of New York. So my question is, do you support the BDS movement against the state of Israel? Please answer with a simple yes or no. We'll begin with Sarah.
No.
Jeffrey?
No.
Gail?
No, never.
Maria?
No.
And Zach?
No, definitely not. They're horrible. I don't like them.
Follow-up, would you accept the endorsement of a group who supports the BDS movement? Please answer with a simple yes or no. Gail?
No, and just so you know, Jeffrey does not support BDS in case that comes up.
Jeffrey?
No.
Maria?
No.
Thank you. Sarah?
No.
And Zach?
No.
Thank you very much. I want to shift our focus to the economy. COVID-19 and the shutdown greatly affected New York City's economy. Our revenue flow took a great hit during the pandemic. How do you plan to pay for the services that the city provides and the legislation that you would like to see passed in New York City? Who will bear the greatest tax burden in your plans? You'll have 60 seconds to respond. We'll start with Jeffrey.
All right, this is my time to shine. Uh, let's talk about arts and culture. Uh, I'm an actor and an elected officer of my union. My industry has been devastated by this pandemic. We've been out of work for 14 months. This is why I'm running for city council. We have got to get the arts and culture sector back up and running. It is the economic engine of New York City. The city does not recover without it. It is the reason people live in the city. It's the reason 65 million tourists visit this city every year, supporting our hotels, restaurants and retail. That is my focus. We're going to get these tourists back into our city and get everyone back to work. That's how we're going to generate the revenue to pay for all of our other essential services. I'm focused on reforming our property taxes. The, if, if you take a look at the way that we collect these, it doesn't make any sense. It's killing our small businesses. And our, the owners of townhouses here on the Upper West Side pay 10 times as much in property taxes as those who own similar properties in Brooklyn. We've got to fix the whole system.
Thank you, Gail.
Couple of things. Midtown is still pretty empty and so is downtown. So we have to deal with public safety as we have discussed. Otherwise, those workers from the suburbs and from our neighborhood are not going to go back and we have to, of course, want them back. I agree about the arts. Broadway is 97,000 people and tourism employs 400,000 people. So the arts are really, really key. I also just want to say we have to figure out this workforce. We have to have like a Marshall Plan. Figuring out how to train people for the new jobs in technology, in healthcare. And that gets talked, 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 but I have not seen any actual action. And we have to be able to have some real-time talent information so that we know what the jobs are in the new economy and how we can train for them. And I hope that the community colleges would be free so that they could do that kind of training. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria?
So it's a reality that people are, are leaving New York and rising, raising taxes is not going to get them to stay here. So we really want New York to be a place where people want to live and not leave. And so right, you know, raising taxes on people living in New York is not going to, 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 to do it. We do need to get our tourism sector back and to do that, we need safe and clean streets. We need our hotels. We need our small businesses thriving. They make up 50% of the private sector businesses in the city. So our small businesses need to be provided with the systemic help that they need to thrive. And that includes lowering taxes, reducing fines and eliminating regulations. That will bring the tax base also back to the city, get our small businesses working. Every single storefront should be filled. We shouldn't, uh, you know, we, we need plans to do that. We need to get that going. We need a safe subway. We need a safe transit from the suburbs. We need to get people back to their offices. We need to have our commercial sectors vibrant and working and filled with workers and taxpayers again.
Zach?
In terms of, in terms of how to afford what I'm putting forward and what I'm interested in doing, if elected, Thrive NYC is about real, reallocating money that's already allocated for the next year and going to be spent for the next few years, which I think will help a lot with public safety, which was a, a very urgent thing for our recovery. My startup retail plan, which we've kickstarted and I'd love to expand, can bring back a lot of shops to Broadway. I've talked to landlords. It works. They're into it. We've done it. Pop-up shops for longer periods of time. I think what Gail said about the Marshall Plan is a fantastic idea. I really agree. And I've been thinking along those lines. We're talking about universal basic investment is something we've been talking about. That, that idea of teaching that in school and using money that's given from other programs to try to invest it. You can really grow your money and people I've worked with from disadvantaged communities have made a lot on Bitcoin. I think social skills in school and empathy in terms of having a workforce that's going to endure as the economy changes, like Gail said. I, that's something that's always consistent. Do you actually want to work with the person? Can they communicate? I know a lot of people who are coded, who can't get jobs. They can't, they're not so good at the interview.
Already, Sarah?
Yeah, I think Jeffrey put the arts and culture perfectly. I won't even try to, to do that again, but completely agree with that. We need the arts and culture back. I also would like to use some of the federal money we have right now to invest in a Green New Deal for the city, to prepare our city for the climate crisis, build new housing, improve our infrastructure and create great jobs, which will boost the economy. Definitely agree with reforming the property tax system. Then I also wanted to say, in terms of supporting small businesses right here in our neighborhood, I put forward a proposal for Broadway in our district that I would encourage everyone to go to my website and check out. That would, I think, would support small businesses, create a destination for people in our neighborhood and just improve the streetscape.
Thank you very much. We'll now shift our focus to a bit of a lightning round or miscellaneous bag. So some questions will be a yes or no and some will be very short answer as well. So the first question is, should street dining be a permanent fixture on the Upper West Side with a simple yes or no? Maria?
Yes, I do want to say we have to address the parking issue.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, definitely.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Zach?
Yeah, I love it. I'm a big fan.
Gail?
Yes.
Thank you. And I guess the follow-up question is, do you support further limiting street parking on the Upper West Side? Yes or no? 15 seconds to explain. We'll start with Jeffrey.
Uh, I'm proposing a residential permit park system to prioritize parking for residents of the Upper West Side. I'm concerned, I'm a proponent of congestion pricing, but because the cutoff is at 60th Street, I'm concerned the Upper West Side is going to become a parking lot for commuters. And we've got to prioritize parking for people who live here.
Thank you. Zach?
I absolutely need to keep the free parking. It's a backbone of the neighborhood, especially for middle-class people, citizens who cannot afford garage, garages. Yes, emphatically yes. And the bikes are a menace. We got to figure that out as well.
And Gail?
Well, bikes need to follow the rules of the road, which is a challenge. But I do think that when congestion pricing comes, and I did vote for it in the city council, we're going to have to have this discussion. Whether it's residential, whether it is some other kind of limiting of cars, it's going to be a real challenge. So that's when I would like to see what is going to happen.
Support limiting street parking on the Upper West Side, Gail?
No, I don't, I do not support limiting.
Thank you. Sarah?
Yes, you know, the fact is that only 28% of Upper West Siders even own a car. Most of them don't use their car to commute and the curbside space is a public realm. And I think there are really interesting and exciting and innovative ways that we can use that curbside space. You know, not that it's all, not that all parking is going to be gone, but like I just would like to look at our curbsides holistically and see how we can use that space to the greatest good.
Maria?
No, no, and no. No more vilifying car owners. I'm thinking about and looking to support a residential parking program, which we might need for congestion pricing. I think that's something we really need to look into. But no, not anymore parking spaces in our neighborhood.
All right, our final question before we move on to closing remarks is, was mentioned just a moment ago. Many members of our community support bike lanes, but have seen an increase in both motorized bikes and bicyclists who just do not follow traffic rules while riding on our streets and sidewalks. Many Upper West Siders have been hit by cyclists not following traffic regulations. In 15 seconds, what would you do to protect pedestrians from reckless cyclists? We'll start with Maria.
We have to have better enforcement of existing laws. We have to close the loophole on e-bikes, which doesn't require wearing identifying information for any third-party providers. We have to have a better way of stopping people from riding on the sidewalk.
Gail?
Well, I'm the one, I think, that mentioned this issue because it is a huge one. I just wrote a letter about the dirt bikes, which come in multitudes and which are illegal. They need to be stopped. And just in terms of bicycles, they have to follow the rules of the road and we need to have enforcement to do that. But I am supporter of the protected bike lanes.
Jeffrey?
I think we need to design better bike lanes that are safer. But we started transitioning towards a bicycle city without educating everyone about what that means for, say, in terms of safety. Pedestrians, bicyclists and drivers need to all be on the same page with a massive education program. And then we need to enforce the rules that we have.
Bikes are a menace right now. They're really tough. And I love bikes and I love cycling in the city, but the way it's going, they're on, you know, some of the scooters are on the street. I've seen people have to jump out of the way, people on meeting. I've invited the neighborhood. It's scary. Maybe stiffer fine. Some kind of enforcement has to be done and urgently because it's jeopardizing great biking. We like great biking.
And Sarah?
Yeah, I'll say as a biker myself, I agree that many of us don't like the way others ride. It's dangerous for me. I was actually almost hit by a bike coming the wrong way down the bike lane today when I was riding home to come here. My son was hit by a bike in Central Park last year. So certainly we need better design in the park, especially there's no safe way to get across the park. So I think designing separate spaces for bikers is a good idea.
Before we close the night, I will provide each candidate with 60 seconds to share some closing remarks. I'll do it in the reverse order in which we opened a evening. So let's begin with Sarah.
Great, thank you so much. It was great to be here. We talked about some really important issues, so thank you for having us. You know, as I mentioned, I think I have a lot of great experience working on these issues, some, some good professional experience that I can bring to the table to get things done for this community. And I have a new vision and, you know, we've just seen some of these problems in the neighborhood get worse and worse over the last 20 years. And I'd like to bring a new perspective to how we can potentially try to solve some of these issues. As you mentioned at the beginning, we have ranked choice voting. So I would, of course, love to earn your number one vote, but if not, I'd love to get your number two or three. And please go to my website, sarahlin.nyc. I have a lot of very specific policy proposals up on my website so you can see where I stand and what I would be looking to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey?
You know, as I mentioned, this is my favorite part of campaigning, getting to talk to people. If I, if we haven't met yet, I would love to sit down and talk to you in person or on Zoom. Please get in touch with me. I want to know what's on your mind, what you've been experiencing over this past year and how I can better represent you when I'm elected to the city council. I got into this race after the pandemic shut down my entire industry. I'm running to make sure we've got at least one arts advocate at the table because access to arts and culture is the reason so many live here. New York City's economic future depends on the revitalization of arts and culture. And I'm really proud of the grassroots campaign we've been running, powered by many of the New Yorkers who have been hit hardest by the pandemic, arts workers. A third of our campaign's contributions come from individuals who list their occupation as unemployed. And I'm ready to bring my strengths and experience as an artist and a labor leader to city council to revitalize the arts and culture sector, to support our small businesses, to address housing and homelessness, and together we'll create a renaissance for all. Thank you.
Maria?
So thank you so much for hosting us this evening. It was great to speak with you about these important issues. I'm not a career politician and I'm not beholden to any special interest groups. I am an attorney with 40 years deep legal and business experience. I have negotiated thousands of contracts, managed multimillion-dollar budgets. I've also president, past president of the Copyright Society of the USA and a lifelong trustee. I'm running because the city needs New Yorkers like myself to help New York recover. I'm a lifelong New Yorker, grew up in Midwood, Brooklyn, 40-year resident of the Upper West Side, raised my family here. I have a great deal of experience also working in the community to bring sports facilities to underserved communities and raising money for Food Bank NYC. And during the pandemic, I did significant pro bono legal work, helping small businesses get through the pandemic. My vision for the Upper West Side is a safe and thriving neighborhood. We have a gorgeous, diverse and vibrant community. And I'd like to help to bring our community, to unify our community. And I hope that we can do that with a unified community to bring a safe and thriving neighborhood where we all are not only actually feeling safe. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. I really enjoyed this forum, a lot of great questions and discussion. And the important thing for me is I'm a hyper-local candidate and I am looking to deliver on what I promised even before being elected. I didn't raise an enormous amount of money. Instead, what I did was I organized 10 people who, many of them were previously uninterested in politics. We've been doing things around the neighborhood, trying to provide services, interact with as many people from affected communities as possible, opening stores and demonstrating what I, as a councilperson, when I have a discretionary budget available to me, can deliver for constituents around here. A lot of the things people are asking for us and want from their public servant is immediate changes to very local concerns that are happening around our neighborhood. And I think you'd want a councilperson that would be hyper-focused on that and capable of delivering it. So I'd love to talk, I'd love to talk to you anytime. My number's on my website. Please get in contact and vote for me June 22nd and June 10th, the whole way.
Thank you. Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Rabbi. You're one of the best moderators we've all seen. So congratulations. I can see, and I've seen a lot. I am running because I know that the challenges that are facing us are like none other. I think we've gone through some of them, whether it's public safety, housing, homeless, figuring out how to deal with healthcare for the future and jobs and the small business. And I think that my experience will help create some opportunities that can make the right decisions with all of these new people coming in for 2022. I've also been endorsed by, as you know, Congressman Nadler, Ruth Messinger, Dick Godfrey, Linda Rosenfeld and about 55 organizations across the city, from environment to the local political clubs. I want to change the way in which business is done so people are safe. Government doesn't always respond.